All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order if everyone would please rise for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. This is our last meeting before the school year ends, so I know everybody's getting excited. First, let me thank everybody, apologize for moving our meeting to Tuesday night from Monday night, but we had a good showing last night at the commissioners' meeting, and I hope they saw the importance of what education means to this county. And so those of you that went, thank you. Our entire board, Dr. Johnson, everybody, thank you for being there. I think our efforts, we might not see them immediately, but our efforts will work. So thank you to everyone, and again, to our guests that are here for recognition. Again, apologize for having to move it to Tuesday, but this affects our schools and public education in Pamlico County, and we're doing a good job, and we showed it last night. All right, at this time, we're going to move on to need to approve our open session minutes. If there's no changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. Everybody's had a chance to look at our closed session minutes. If there's no change, if there are changes, we'll have to make those in closed session. If there are no changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we are actually going to move Finance Letter E to F, and then we're going to add Fund Aid Amendment to Item E under Finance. And Tiffany's going to make that adjustment in assembly, so we don't have to shuffle, but those will be the changes to the agenda. If that makes sense. We're moving Finance Letter E to F, and then we're going to add Fund Aid Amendment to Item Finance E.
All right. Everybody's made those changes. With that, I'll need a motion to approve our agenda as amended.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. All right, let's move on to the good news. Our matters of the public, Dr. Rice.
Good evening. Once again, we're here to recognize our Rotary Students of the Month. Come on up, ladies. First, from Pamlico County Middle School, we have Amelia Brothers. Amelia, known as Mia, is a sixth grader. Her teachers had this to say about Mia. Mia is a prime example of outstanding dedication, academic excellence, and positivity at Pamlico County Middle School. Throughout this school year, Mia has consistently demonstrated a strong work ethic, actively participated in class discussions, and gone above and beyond in completing assignments and assessments. She is not only an exceptional student academically, but also a role model for her peers while displaying kindness, respect, and leadership qualities. Mia is one of the most kind, spirited students I've ever had the pleasure to teach. She gets out of the car every morning with a smile on her face. In class, she is helpful to others, loves to work in teams, is very efficient, dependable, and confident. She's a very hard worker and makes sure the task at hand is completed properly. Her enthusiasm for learning and positive attitude is truly inspiring. She consistently brings a bright and uplifting energy to our classrooms. Her passion for learning and participation in class has been such a blessing to watch throughout the entire year. It's clear that she is committed to doing her best, and her efforts do not go unnoticed. Mia embodies the values of Pamlico County Schools and serves as an inspiration to all. Keep up the fantastic work, and don't lose the passion you have for learning. We are confident that you have a bright future ahead at Pamlico County Middle School, and we are grateful to have the opportunity to watch you grow this year. Congratulations, Amelia Mia Brothers, Pamlico County Middle School Rotary Student of the Month. Next, from Pamlico County High School, we have Trinity Whitehurst. Ms. Lanchi had this to say about Trinity. When considering who should receive the Rotary Student of the Month Award, our team is looking for an individual who stands out for more than simply academic achievements. Several times in just the past few weeks, Trinity's name has surfaced in conversations because of the many ways in which she shines at our school. I thought it was important to share with you how Trinity's teachers describe her. Ms. Phillips shares, Trinity is an amazing student. She is self-motivated and dedicated to always putting her best effort into assignments and projects. She is not afraid to challenge herself, and I am so glad that she decided to take an AP class this year. She is a critical thinker and an excellent student of history. Trinity also gets along well with her teachers and peers. She always has something nice to say to those around her, and she encourages others when they're down. I have loved teaching Trinity this year. I wish I could duplicate her a million times over. Ms. Rose adds, she is simply outstanding. She holds herself to high standards and meets the goals she sets for herself. No one is more deserving than she is. These comments only scratched the surface of the positive feedback from Trinity's teachers. Additionally, Trinity's talent as a vocalist in our choir has been truly impressive. She has several solo pieces at both choir performances. She is so poised and confident on stage, and her voice is simply beautiful. What truly sets Trinity apart is her unwavering authenticity. In an age where teens are often influenced by social media and peers, Trinity doesn't conform, but instead remains true to her values and consistently shows kindness to everyone. We can all learn from this example. She is beautiful both inside and out, and I cannot be more proud to nominate her this month. Congratulations, Trinity Whitehurst, Pamlico County High School Rotary Student of the Month.
One, congratulations to all you, your teachers and your students. I mean, it was an unbelievable year this year for scholastics, obviously, because of the amount of funding that we all received. Congratulations, keep up.
Thank you.
Don't leave yet, Earl. Earl, come back. So you let me down. You were supposed to wear your tux tonight.
Oh, you said September.
Well, that'll work too, but no, no, don't leave. I just, I personally, as a parent, want to thank the Rotary Club. They gave thirteen five hundred dollar scholarships to our top thirteen GPA students. And then last Tuesday, they gave three five thousand dollar scholarships to three of our seniors. And our Rotary Students of the Month, these two, Mia and Trinity, y'all are examples of why we were at the commissioners' meeting last night. And for people like those at Rotary and what y'all do to, you just make us the best school system in the state of North Carolina.
Well, thank you. We were talking about it last night, wasn't that long ago? They were giving a hundred dollars to five people for their scholastic number. And I was like, wow, because, I mean, we do give money also to Pamlico, so they can give up. So, you know, it's about thirty-one thousand dollars for Pamlico County.
That's great.
Yeah, and it's great, because at least we see the receipts.
Yep, yep. Thank you, September Tuxedo.
By the way, I did have the tails, tops of tails, and I passed, and that's what I care.
Yeah. We look forward to September.
That is the end of the good news. You guys are welcome to stay, but you're welcome to.
Thank you all for coming. All right, we have no public comment tonight, so we're going to move right on to our superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with membership report. The month of May, as of May twenty-eighth, actually saw a decline in our ADM. We had a total of eight students to leave. Four students left Pamlico Primary School, leaving us at three hundred and nine. We had no students leave Fred Anderson. They stayed steady at one fifty-six. Two students left Pamlico County Middle School, bringing them to two forty-eight. And then two students left Pamlico County High School, bringing them to four twenty-six. So we have a grand total of one thousand one hundred and thirty-nine students as of May twenty-eighth. I did inquire about that. That's a lot of students to go, and every one of them, they were moving, some moving to Virginia, some to Florida, and some to other parts of North Carolina. So they were moving out of the county. Other items on the report tonight, just want to give a quick recap, and I will do it quickly. May was an incredibly busy month, but it was a great month in Pamlico County. We had, began the month, I was fortunate to attend the commencement exercise at Pamlico Community College. We had several students to earn their associate's degree, several of our seniors to earn that associate's degree, and several others to earn a certificate towards that degree. So there is just much to be proud of there, and just want to commend our community college partnership, what we've got going there. The middle school band, high school band, they all had concerts during the month of May. We've had several signing days, and with really nice ceremonies, and we're looking at ways to make those even more, bring awareness even greater, and we were able to put them out on our social media channels. But Military Signing Day, our ROTC was involved. We had several students. One, a couple joined the Army, a couple Navy, and then the Marine Corps. And so it was great seeing that. We've had two students that were recognized last month as apprentices at BSH. That was fantastic. We had a signing day for that. And then we had a signing day, we had two students, three students selected for internships at FRC East this summer. And so there was a signing for that. And I want to just recognize Mr. Kerwin and his efforts in getting those things done. That was really fantastic. I think our traditionally signings with our sports, and those are fantastic and wonderful. But when we have opportunities for these students and their peers to see them signing, to have these work-related apprenticeships and internships, it's fantastic. And we're looking at ways to even improve that next year, but thank you, Mr. Kerwin, for doing that. We had our Senior Sunset, first time we've done that. That was a success. FFA Banquet, Skills USA Banquet, lots and lots of good things happening. The Theater Program did the play, Don't Rock the Boat. I went to that. That was, it was very entertaining. They did a great job, and kudos to Ms. Prescott and her group. And then we had the Athletic Awards, Academic Awards, and Scholarship Night. And our scholars, as you all probably have heard, over one point three million dollars in scholarships. Congratulations to the class of twenty-four. That is simply outstanding. Divided up my report a little bit, just to give you a quick update on the budget talks with the commissioners. We had a budget breakfast held here on May third, a commissioners' budget work session that Ms. Altman and I attended on May thirteenth. We made our official presentation to the commissioners on the twentieth. And then we had the last budget work session we attended was May twenty-ninth. So after May twenty-ninth, obviously, you all know, came away from that meeting a little concerned with the direction of some of the conversation. And I want to echo what Mr. Prescott said. I appreciate everybody who came out to that meeting last night. It's full of energy, and really, that energy was positivity for our school system. And so I know there are many of you here. I want to thank you. If you were here and you spoke last night, thank you. If you were here tonight and you were just present, thank you. If you're watching from home right now and you were there last night, thank you. We appreciate the support that you've shown our schools. It's really a wonderful feeling, and it really just reemphasizes, again, the importance that our community has for education. And we thank you for that. And that is the May recap. At this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Rice to come up and give us a quick update on our new school. We've had some things happen in the past month with that as well, and he's going to, he'll fill us in.
A few things. I will continue with our same PowerPoint. I've added a few things this time. Again, our construction, right now, we're still waiting on the approval from DPI and other inspectors. That date is, I turned it red because that's very close now. It's only a few days away. Along with the documents ready for bid, they told me we would have those this week sometime, so I'm expecting them any time now. And that, so far, we should stay on schedule, so hopefully, we'll still be opening in August of twenty-six. I had this up here last time. This is a little bit different this time. This same, almost the same drawing, but it's changed a little bit. They came out and did a walk-around with Cory, our maintenance director, and some places where we didn't need them to be at, they changed their outline a little bit. Right here is where we are right now, the central office. They've got a construction parking area on this grass lot that's over here, and overflow parking on this lot right here. So I guess we will eventually get a parking lot here for this building, so that'll work out. Over here on the corner of High School Drive and Anderson, there's going to be their building where they manage the project from. And there'll be a lay-down area out here. This area right here is where the softball field is right now. Everything else is pretty much the same in here. On May sixteenth, a few weeks ago, we had an outreach event with Metcom was here to meet with subcontractors and suppliers just to talk about the process for people that are interested in doing those jobs, and what they needed to do to, how to bid, and how to pre-qualify to bid, and those type of things. Actually, had a really good turnout. We didn't know whether anybody would show up. We had about thirty different people here, so we were pleased. Metcom was very pleased. Here's a picture, or a couple pictures from that event, all the contractors here. This is the people from Metcom and from SFLNA. And here's Dr. Johnson saying a few brief remarks at the beginning. Look at that previous picture. I'm sorry, it's a little blurred. It was the best I had. I switched around the next two slides for a reason. This slide talks about the additional twelve million dollars. We're still waiting. It looks like it'll be at least July now before we hear anything, so we're still in wait and see. And the baseball field update, you see I've drawn a line right here? That's because everything else is kind of now stopped, because we're waiting on that twelve million, because we can't start the construction process until we have the entire twelve million dollars. Do you want to add anything to that?
Well, I would just say, you know, the initial grant, if you recall, is fifty million dollars. And the state, thankfully, saw that inflation was rising, and so they made it possible for us to get an additional twelve million dollars. But you had to apply for that, and so we applied, and I have received informal notification from the State Superintendent of Public Construction that we've got that money. But until we receive official notification, we're not going to turn over any dirt yet. That could remotely possibly put that twelve million dollars in jeopardy, so that's why we're on hold. I have reached out to DPI and explained the situation, that we really would like to get started on this ball field now while the grasses can grow. And he sympathized with me and told me, yes, he understood, but he had spoken to the superintendent, and she said, no more notification letters will be sent out in this fiscal year. So that means nothing, we won't hear anything before July first. And I don't think there's anything we can do to persuade her differently. We've tried, so we're on hold.
I know Cory Harrison, he's done some bidding on some of the different pieces, so once we get the go-ahead, we're ready to roll with this. So it's just a matter of them giving us the money. And that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Any questions, Mr. Rice? Thank you. Just real quick, few miscellaneous items. We have been testing, thanks to Ms. White back there. She's our Accountability Director in addition to Technology, and so this is her big time of year, and testing is rolling. The EOG testing was conducted last week at the primary school, Fred Anderson, and the middle school this week. EOC testing is happening at the high school as our high school students take their final exams. I was fortunate to attend the pre-K graduation this morning. That was pretty awesome to see. Our third grade Moving Up Ceremony was today. Our eighth grade promotion ceremony is Thursday evening in the auditorium at 6:00 PM. And then, of course, the high school graduation is Friday night at 6:30. You have parking passes at your seats, board members. That'll get you into some better parking arrangements, so you don't have to walk so far, so please just keep in mind that they're at your seat. And then I would like to invite you all, on June eleventh, we're having an end-of-year assembly and celebration at the auditorium. We always have a welcome-back celebration when school starts back. But I think if ever there's a time to celebrate, it's at the end of the school year. We have survived it. And also, we've had a lot of great things happening this year, and we want to recognize our teachers. So at 1:30 on the eleventh, if you're free and available, please come out. We just want to recognize some great things that happened in our schools with our staff. We've had several teachers to receive awards, and we want to recognize them with their peers. This is a suggestion that came out of our Teacher Advisory Council. I think it's a fantastic idea, and so we're going to try that out this year. So with that, that is my superintendent report. That brings us to board member time. If any board members have anything that you'd like to share, then this is your time.
I would just like to say I attended the middle school academic awards program last week. It was a wonderful event, celebrating their students and all their many accomplishments. I was very proud of them. We have a lot of very smart and talented students. Mr. Rice Snyder and his faculty and staff, they did a wonderful job planning that program, organizing it, and carrying out the program. They also had a meal that was catered. It was great. It was a really nice event. And I would just like to say I'm proud of all of our schools for all of the events that we've had for the end of the year. It's really amazing, all of the things that we're doing for students and that the schools are putting on for their students, all the awards programs and the recognition ceremonies. ceremonies. It's, it's really nice and I'm really proud of all of our students and our administrations. The principals have worked really hard. I was very proud of the principals last night. Their presentation that they made at the meeting was great. The coaches, Mr. Prescott and Dr. Johnson, you did a great job. And I'd also like to thank the community folks who spoke. We appreciate all the support. I was really proud last night after the meeting at, at all of this community support for our school system, so that's a great thing. Thank you.
To follow up on that, I attended the scholarship ceremony last Tuesday and the number's 1.3 million and they said it's growing. That's pretty impressive with, I think, a senior class of just a little under 100 students. It was just amazing, the outpouring from our local organizations and groups. I think we had scholarships that ranged from $500 to over $300,000. And it was just, it was a great night to see our kids awarded for their hard work that they've done. On Thursday night, attended the athletic banquet and it was awesome to see Malachi. Those of you who don't know Malachi, most of you probably do. It was awesome to see him to get his state championship ring Thursday night. And then we also have a new state champion, Antoine King, in Discus. But it was great to see all our spring sport athletes and our seniors recognized for their, their efforts that they put in in their four years in athletics. It was good last night again to see our four principals. We had coaches, you know, and community members too, sitting right back there that spoke. We thank you for doing that. It was just a great outpouring of support that we need. And I, I don't want to say overwhelmed. I know we have that support, but it's awesome to see when you pack the courtroom, how much it, it means to this county and our, and our kids. It's our children. I said last night, my main reason for desiring to be a board member was to make sure that the kids of Pamlico County have as good or better of an education that I received. And most of our board members, I think, can say the same thing. You know, that's your sole reason of, of sitting up here. So again, thank you. It was just, it was a great outpouring of support and we thank you.
I do want to say, and I apologize.
That's fine.
I thank you. Sincerely thank each and every one of you for showing up last night and speaking last night. It was letting them see that we're not just a community, we're not just a school, but we are family. And family in Pamlico County matters. I can say I am proud that I am a King Five. Thank you.
Any others? All right, we're going to move on. We don't have anything on our consent agenda. Nothing for instructions, so we're going to move on to finance. That seems to be the hot topic right now.
We have a couple of things to talk about. Let's see. On the agenda, first item up is the school nutrition bids. So in your board member packet, you will see that board approval is being requested for the attached school nutrition bids. Bids were requested for both food and supplies and according to the table that Ms. Laura provided, produce, ice cream, and milk was extended for a third year. As you know, Pamlico County Schools is part of the Coastal Coalition Group, which allows us to bid as a group to get better pricing. So we bring this item to you tonight to seek board approval on the attached bids for next school year.
Any questions on those? I think everybody's had a chance to review them. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is Fund Two, Local Current Expense Budget Amendment Number Nine. This budget amendment is not recognizing any additional revenue. It is simply making adjustments between the purpose codes. Basically, it is a cleanup of all of the charges year to date in the different purpose codes as we've had spending more in some areas and less in others. As you look at the expenditures, you can kind of see the increases and decreases which reflect increases and decreases in the different categories of expense. So this is basically an adjustment to the local current expense to reflect actual expenditures through May of this school year. Do you have any questions about that budget amendment?
Any questions on that one? All right, entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Fund Four, Capital Budget Amendment Number Ten. This budget amendment actually recognizes lottery proceeds received, both for the new construction project as well as the renovation, repair and renovation fund. So we had invoices that were paid at the beginning of this fiscal year that were paid initially by the school system and then the funds were reimbursed by the county as the funds were dropped into their account for the lottery proceeds. And so in order for our Fund Four budget to be in balance, since we paid those expenditures, we need to recognize in the budget both the expenditure side and the revenue side that we received reimbursement for. So that is the $245,701.45 that you see in lottery public school capital funds. And then this also recognizes $68,037 that is for the Voice Over IP project that put in place the new phone system and replaced the intercom system at Fred Anderson Elementary. So we have submitted to the county invoices in the amount of $68,037 and we will be getting reimbursement through that repair and renovation lottery fund for those expenses. So that is adding both of those items to the capital outlet budget for this fiscal year. Do you have any questions about that?
Any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries.
Next item is Fund Five, Child Nutrition Budget Amendment Number Eight. This is recognizing grants, grant funds that were received by the child nutrition department. The first grant is a USDA supply chain assistance grant in the amount of $33,972. This is a grant that is provided to offset the cost of food, so that is being recognized as an addition to the revenue in addition to the food expense line. The second grant is the North Carolina Innovative Breakfast Grant for $25,000 and that grant will be used to purchase kitchen equipment and it also is intended to increase meal capacity and serving. So it's used for programs like second chance breakfast. It's more innovative ways of encouraging students to participate in school breakfast. So both of those grants have been added to the child nutrition budget to reflect the revenue and expenditure accurately for Fund Five. Any questions about that amendment?
Any questions? All right, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries.
Okay. The final amendment is for Fund Eight. It's Budget Amendment Number Eleven and this is to allocate from fund balance proceeds that were received from FEMA to complete waterproofing of the second floor exterior at Pamlico County Middle School. So this amendment is allocating the initial amounts to pay for the beginnings of this project. The total cost of the project is around $50,000, which we have remaining funds from FEMA to pay for that entire cost. But we have just a portion that will be paid for in June to begin the project and that work is scheduled to start mid-June. So this amendment allocates $10,154 of that remaining FEMA money to begin the project in June. And you will see that added in July as well for the remaining balance of the project. We'll bring another budget amendment for that as well. Do you have any questions about that amendment for Fund Eight?
Any questions? All right, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Okay. The final item is a request for a special call of Board of Education meeting and I am requesting that the board consider setting a special call meeting on Thursday, June the 27th, for approval of any end of year financial documents as well as approval of the fiscal year 2025 Board of Education budget resolution. I think that it would be in our best interest to go ahead and adopt a budget amendment based on planning allotments from state and federal as well as estimates of what we anticipate receiving from the county so that we can begin operations July 1st. State, state policy requires that we have a budget in place to begin operations July 1st. So what I intend to bring to you is based on state and federal planning allotments and estimates for our local and capital based on what we anticipate receiving from the county commissioners, pending their approval of the budget as they have been presented to them.
What time were you thinking?
You took my question.
We can do what, whatever you want to do. We can do a midday, we can do an evening, we can do a virtual meeting if you, if you need to. Whatever y'all want to do.
Me personally, I would prefer six and that way we can have the documents to look at.
Sure.
But that's up to y'all.
Six would be better for me than earlier in the day.
Everybody good with June 27th? That's a Thursday.
Thursday evening at six?
Thursday at six. Everybody good with that?
Tiffany, make sure you send us plenty of reminders.
And do we want to have any discussion about the July meeting?
And then, I think we've, past several years have decided to take July, take the Board of Education meeting off of July since business is typically fairly slim during that month and then resume in August, but that, that will be up to you all.
If we, if we meet on the 27th, then looking at the calendar, we would be meeting again July 1st. So that's one to, like, four days after that. So if everybody's okay with that, we'll, we're going to call a special call meeting on the 27th and we'll just cancel our July meeting and then we'll meet again in August unless we need to meet again for another special meeting budget wise, but hopefully not. So is everybody okay with that? So that'll be June 27th at six, cancel our July 1st meeting. And I do need a motion to approve that.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to our governance, our related services contracts, and that's going to be Ms. Davis.
Good evening. I am presenting for approval contracts for service providers to address physical therapy, occupational therapy, interpreting, audiology, nursing, vision, and behavior for the 24, 25 school year. And I'm also presenting a memorandum of understanding between Pamlico County Schools and the Pamlico County Department of Student, of Social Services that addresses the sharing of information, collaboration, and transportation-related provisions in accordance with the Average Students' Seeds Act and the Fostering Connections Act to ensure educational stability of children and youth in foster care.
All right, everybody, we, we had all those on assembly, so hopefully everybody's had a chance to look at those. We got a question.
I have just a couple of questions. So are, are any of these different contracts than what we had this previous year?
There is a new contract for nursing and a new contract for the behavior, ABA therapy. Those two are new.
And what was the nursing one?
The nursing one was Maxim.
Maxim, yes. So for the, for the memorandum of understanding with social, with the Department of Social Services, when it talked about the transportation and if a child needed transportation so that they could remain in their school of origin, would the school of origin be outside of Pamlico County ever?
We would work, if, if it's, if it's here, we would work with the, the school, the students in the school of origin here. The, the Department of Social Services and the area where the student came from, they would be working with their school of origin. So it would be a Pamlico County school student in this case. We wouldn't take on that expense of transporting somebody from like Green County to here. Because we would have to determine if it's in the best interest of the student. So there would be a discussion between Social Services and the school district to determine what the best interest of the child is.
Okay.
If it's not best for them to come from three counties away, we wouldn't make that determination for them to come three counties away to come here.
Right.
So we are working with students whose school of origin is in Pamlico County.
Okay, okay. So another question that I had, do any of, do any of these contracts run during the summer? Like, do we provide services for any of the students during the summer months?
We would provide services for students during the summer months if we owe compensatory services, which we don't for any related services, or if there, if it was a determination that there was a need for ESY, which we don't have this.
We don't have any for that, okay.
Not for related services.
So the, the sign language, the international language, was it international or?
Integrated.
So they're out of Wilmington, but we don't have to pay their travel from, we do, from Wilmington. So there's not one closer than?
There's not. Actually, these, these particular interpreters are coming from Rocky Mount. In order to find the interpreters, I had to do a regional search and then eventually a statewide search.
Wow.
So we ended up with this one company that was able to provide interpreting services for our two deaf students.
So have we been using them already?
Yes, we used them this, this year, yes. This was the first year we used the, the interpreters here.
Okay, that's all. Thank you. That's a lot. Ms. Davis, you do a lot and we do appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more questions? I want to ask for a motion, but the motion, we need to put in there pending approval by our attorney. Rachel got them in the packet, but they're still reviewing those. So, but we can, we can approve them pending approval by legal.
The contract?
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Motion in the second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. Mr. Rice, you making this next one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So the next one is asking to approve a change to policy 3320 on school trips. The current policy doesn't allow our activity buses or any school buses to go outside of the state lines. We're asking to change that to be allowed to go up to 150 miles outside of the state lines. If we have to send a bus outside of the state, then our transportation director would contact the school districts outside of North Carolina between the state line and where they're going to make sure their transportation departments can assist us if we have a problem. The ones in North Carolina already have that agreement. The reason for this is our, well, the main reason is the ROTC has changed their areas that they compete in. The Navy has decided that for us and about half of the teams they will be competing, competing against are in Virginia, so none of them are over 150 miles. So I've got a list. I didn't bring it with me tonight, but I can share that with you if you, if you'd like to see that for the next meeting.
So explain that again. So the counties in North Carolina or counties in, have, will notify them before, that are on that northern border?
From, from the route that they take from the state line to the school that they're going to, the transportation director will contact those different counties or school districts to make sure that they can help us if we were to have a breakdown.
Okay. So I know in the past, we've had discussion about that, and that's the reason that we would not let activity buses go out of state was because of, if we did have something happen, then we needed a replacement bus.
And our transportation director doesn't have a problem with doing this. She's good with it. Actually, a year or so ago, I believe it was at the beginning of the Ukraine war, they were supposed to go to Norfolk for something, and the National Guard was going to let them use their bus, but that incident happened, so they took that back, and you guys waived the policy for that one trip to let them use a bus on that. And she called those districts on that trip as well.
And I think they've already, she has been in, there's been some dialogue between those districts already. This is not like where there's going to be some cold call and say, hey, you know, they don't, they have no knowledge of us. So, but she would make that call before every trip.
You have other questions?
I'm okay with that. Any questions or comments from the rest of the board? All right, we entertain a, let's see, this will be first reading, okay. So it's nothing that has to be approved tonight. We'll bring it back at our August meeting?
Yeah, we just need to do it before school starts.
Okay.
Question?
Yes.
What about insurance? Any changes for insurance going outside?
Good question. We'll find out between now and August. Yep.
Good question.
All right, Mr. Gibbs.
I move that Pamlico County Board of Education entered into closed session to consider confidential student matters as provided in N C General Statute one-four-three dash three-eighteen point one-one A one and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act twenty U S C one-two-three-two G and G S one-fifteen C dash four-two. Confidential personnel matters as provided in N C G S one-four-three three-eighteen point one-one A one, five and six, and one-fifteen C dash three-nineteen, and to consult with the Board of Education Attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privileges as provided in General Statute one-four-three dash three-eighteen point one-one eight-three.
All right, I have a motion. I need a second.
Motion.
All right, motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And motion carries. We'll be going into closed session at six forty-seven.
All right, we're back in open session. I need a motion to approve personnel as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Need a motion to approve our out-of-district students as presented.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Make sure you got on your calendars, the special meeting is going to be June 27th at 6:00. And we are not having a July board meeting, so our next regular board meeting will be in August. So I think that's all the meeting dates, training and board events. Need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.